Most of us are here, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome everyone to the September meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. Roll call please.
Squadrado?
Here.
Brown?
Uh, here.
Gross?
Here.
Lapp?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Shingles?
Here.
Thering?
Here.
And I don't see Olver. He's at the... You have Quorum though?
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so we'll proceed with the meeting. Uh, first item is approval of tonight's agenda. You have the agenda in front of you, there's several new business items. And, uh, is there anything else that anyone is aware of that needs to be on tonight's agenda? Or any concerns with tonight's agenda? Uh, we can have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll support that.
Motion is by Gross, second by Lapp to approve the agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have our agenda. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes. We last met on August 20th. And you have the August 20th minutes in front of you. Starting on page four of the packet. Are there any corrections to the August 20th minutes? I found one minor thing. On the first page of the minutes, in the public comment, um, the first public comment, the first sentence of the first public comment, uh, it says, commented on a family member living in an area zoned, I assume that should be I-1. Because the current zoning is I-1 and they're wanting it to be R-1. You see what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay. That was all I had. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, we can have a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve with correction.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is by Gross, second by Lapp to approve the minutes with the one minor correction. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved. Next item is Correspondence Board Reports and Presentations. And, I'll turn it over to Commissioner, I see he's got his notebook with him, so we're gonna, we're in for a, uh, what's the right, what word do I want?
I trimmed it down just a little bit. I mean, we do wanna get out on time, I think, so...
Yeah.
Alright, so one of the things that we did, the Board of Trustees did, is, um, we accepted a base bid for $3,857,000, or $857,325. It's part of the, uh, uh, the Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. It's part of the, uh, it's part of the grant money that we were awarded back in October of '23. The grant money we were awarded was almost $11 million. This, there's many, many phases to this project, and this is just one of the phases. Um, this phase, part of, I'm not gonna necessarily get every inch of the phase in here, but two of the things that I have written down are, it's a, part of it is for a transmission, uh, extend, an extension, uh, main located from the new water, while this located on the corner of Deerfield and Mission to the Isabella Treatment Plant. And, the other is, I have written down as a 12-inch water main loop from Pickard to Somerton Roads, I'm sorry, from Pickard slash Somerton Roads to Broadway Road. So there's a few other little odds and ends that go with that, and I'm not trying to undermine the project, but this is just one of, of many phases. The Board also, if you ever wanna know how your Board feels about management and staff, uh, listen to the last part of our last Board meeting. Uh, we had our evaluation form of the manager. And we go through and we get asked questions, and then we rate it on a scale of 1 to 5. And based on that, we may have, you know, 1 being not satisfied, and we'll say 5 being the most satisfied, or me, beyond expectations. So if you ever wanna know how the Board feels, it's not very long, but it's very informative, so you'll, the discussion was great, and you'll get an overall feeling of how the Board feels, uh, about the manager and, again, staff like Rodney and everybody, and Tara, I mean, it's all, one great group of people that we have working for us, so...
What date is that?
Uh, um, last Wednesday. It's, it doesn't, it won't take very long, it's the end part of the meeting.
It's the last meeting.
It's the last meeting, and it's, it's the last agenda item. I like the discussion, so, it's pretty cool. There's, I don't know, 12, 13 questions, and then we get to talk about what we feel, our strengths, things to improve on, um, things, things of that nature, so... If you didn't already know, the Board unanimously, unanimously, um, approved the appointment of Mr. Brown to the Planning Commission. We had the first reading and second reading slash adoption of the repeal of outdated and unenforceable township ordinances. These ordinances, the four ordinances that I have written down are a junkyard ordinance, a, another one is license to sell beer, wine, and spirits. Another one is adult entertainment business and marijuana dispense and grow facilities. Um, these, in some way, shape, or form, were either unenforceable, or unenforceable, or conflicted with state laws. So I believe that was more of a house cleaning, um, that Mr. Nanny and his staff went through and, and brought to our attention. And then, let's see, really the last thing is, is we had discussion on some of our governance policies, which is how we like to go to business. There's a whole slew of governance policies that we go through periodically through the year, you, you wouldn't wanna do it all at once. So, once a month, we go through a handful of them, and it's more or less to make sure that we're in compliance with everything, that we're doing what we should, how can we improve, do we wanna change anything, um, things of that nature, so... Just kinda keep us all in check, from the Board of Trustees, to our manager, to everything, so, throughout the course of the year. That's it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tie you down with any more information.
Okay. Questions for Commissioner Thering on his report, or on any Board of Trustees-related matters? Okay, and, since you pointed it out, I neglected to give an official Planning Commission welcome to our new member, Phil Brown, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you here. Okay, um, so that was Commissioner Thering, update from Board of Trustees. We currently don't have a representative on the Zoning Board of Appeals, but that's on tonight's agenda. Next item is, in your packet is the Anxiously Awaiting and Exhaustively Complete Monthly Report, alright, that you have in your packet every month. And so we give Commissioners an opportunity to, uh, ask any questions that they might have on anything in the, uh, Community and Economic Development Department Monthly Report. I joke, but it is a very thorough report, and it's a good place to find both what's happened recently, what's happening this month, and what's anticipated to happen, um, in the future.
Has there been any progress on the rental inspector hiring?
It's, but you should ask that question, because I, uh, we've made, uh, an employment offer to, uh, the gentleman this afternoon, and, and he informally accepted it, uh, with phone, and, uh, just waiting to get back a formal response from him.
Okay. Do you know, do you have a start date?
Uh, it'd be around the end of the month.
Okay.
Very good. Other, other questions? Okay, hearing none, we can move on. Um, are there any other reports that anybody has that need to come before us? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that up. Um, so the next item is Public Comment. Towards the early part of each Planning Commission meeting, we have a public comment, which is restricted to items that are not on the agenda. So, we have a public hearing tonight, so this is not that. And then we have a, an extended public comment towards the end of the meeting. This is specifically, if anyone has an item that, you know, they wanna address us on that's not on tonight's agenda, welcome to do so at this time. Uh, we ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to three minutes, and the, this initial public comment is open at 7:12.
There's no one online.
Okay, we don't have anyone in our electronic room.
Hello, my name is Allison Birkey, I occupy the property of 975 South Isabella Road, and I wanted to attend today in regard to the zoning for, um, the east side of South Isabella Road and north of East River Road. Um, I occupy the second property in from the very corner, and I wanted to, I guess, discuss the zoning to add, um, it to a rural area, so that we can have chickens. I have chickens, goats, geese, ducks, and everything. Um, but currently, I'm not zoned correctly in that area, and I know that multiple other properties above me have animals as well. Um, I just wanted to see if there was an opportunity to change the zoning from industrial to rural residential.
Okay. It's on our agenda, we're gonna be discussing it, so...
I just wanted to add my specific property.
Okay, appreciate it.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
It's B.J.E.R.K.E.
Oh, thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, thank the public for their comments, and we'll proceed. So, that public comment is closed at 7:14. We, again, we have an extended one towards the end of the meeting. So we're ready to move on to new business. So there's, as I mentioned, there's a series of new business items, one of which is, since last month, we lost our vice chair. The vice chair was Commissioner Buckley. Commissioner Buckley stepped down for, for personal reasons to, to attend to other things in his life, and, uh, we thank him for his long service, by the way, on the Planning Commission. But, it leaves us without a vice chair. The vice chair, the role of the vice chair would be to chair meetings in the absence of the chair. That states the, the role. And so, but we should have one. So, it's open for nominations. This would be for a one-year term through the end of next February.
This is the point at the meeting where everyone puts their thumb on the table, and the last one to do so is the new vice chair. Right?
I haven't heard that one. That's a new one to me.
My kids use that one with clearing the tables.
Okay.
I would, I would be interested, only under one condition. If you never miss a meeting like we have in many years we've been on the same ship together.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Shingles for vice chair.
I second that nomination.
Okay. So, uh, Commissioner, uh, Shingles was nominated by Commissioner Olver, first second was by Commissioner Thering, there was a flood of seconds. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none?
You forgot the, the condition.
Well, so, I have no plans to miss any meetings. I'm obviously in a, in a state of advanced age here, so, you never know, but, eh, no plans. Okay, so, uh, this is an official personnel action, so I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Thering?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Squadrado?
Yes.
Brown?
Uh, yes.
Shingles?
I'll say.
Uh, Lapp?
Yes.
And Olver?
A most enthusiastic yes.
Motion carries.
So congratulations, uh, we have a full, we once again have a full slate of officers. The next item, when we, when we, uh, when we lost Commissioner Buckley, we also lost our representative of the Planning Commission to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals meets quarterly, or sort of as needed?
Uh, we have seven, this year, we had seven scheduled meetings, uh, over the course of 12 months. Uh, but, but, uh, they have not yet met this year.
Okay.
So we haven't had a business.
Okay, but as the name implies, it, it, it handles appeals of, of zoning-related matters. And the meeting, it's Wednesdays?
It's the, it's scheduled on the first Wednesday of, of the month at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. That's in, that's like an alternate week to trustees, right? It's between trustees' meetings?
I can volunteer for that if anyone, no one else wants to do it.
I would nominate Commissioner McDonald.
I love meetings.
Support.
Okay, so, Commissioner Gross nominated Commissioner McDonald to be our representative on the ZBA, and I believe it was seconded by Commissioner Olver. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Olver?
Yes.
Uh, Shingles?
Yes.
Squadrado?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Uh, Lapp?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And McDonald?
Hipstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, okay, so we're ready to move on to the other new business items, which are, um, which are the, the various kind of actions. And so, the first one is, uh, last month, we looked at the draft language for the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, uh, dealing with administrative approval of final site plans, and this is P-Tex 24-02. We looked at it, we thought it looked okay, so we agreed to move forward with a public hearing, so the public hearing will be tonight. So before we move into the public hearing, we'll let Rodney introduce it, and then we'll have the public hearing.
Thank you, yeah, everybody should have a copy of our report, dated September 9th, and, uh, a copy of the, of the proposed ordinance. Uh, for benefit of, of Mr. Brown, and, and remind, uh, the rest of us, just to give a, try to give a brief overview of, of where this is coming from, uh, we have, we had, uh, as we've worked with the new ordinance, I still call it the new ordinance, it's been around for five years now, almost, uh, well, uh, almost four, I guess four and a half years. But, uh, that, that ordinance, uh, added a, what, changed the site plan review process, and, and created preliminary site plan and a final site plan, uh, process. Preliminary site plan was, uh, added essentially to give you an earlier look at the, at these plans before they're engineered, before all the outside agencies, uh, have their comments on them, uh, so that you have more influence over the, over that site plan process early on. Uh, with the idea that the final site plan is really the construction plan, that's, that everything's in place, all the details are taken care of, and it's, and, once you approve it, basically, you can go next step to building permits. As we've worked with this process, what we've found, especially as our, uh, project engineers and architects have been working with this process, what we've found is that more and more of our final site plans are coming to you completely ready. There's, there's nothing to be done. Uh, the plans meet all the ordinance requirements, our reports are relatively simple, it conforms with everything we recommend approval. And, and we do have the element that both the state law and our zoning ordinance, uh, require you as a planning commission to approve final site plans, if you find that, that all of the standards of the ordinance have been met. Uh, it's, it, the, the language in the, in the state act and the ordinance is, it is a must to approve in that, uh, the plan in that circumstance. So with that in mind, uh, I've seen more of these plans, and since you're coming before you on your agenda, that there's really no, there's nothing really to discuss, uh, no questions that need to be answered, or no, no, uh, policies or issues that need to be considered and weighed, uh, we suggested the idea of, of moving, uh, those types of final site plans, ones that are, that are found by staff to completely conform to the or, all the ordinance requirements that apply, moving that to an administrative approval. Uh, and that's what this, this, the main thing that this amendment would do, is, uh, create, uh, adjust the, the procedure for final site plan review, that, that if, uh, in, in staff review of those plans, it's, they're found to comply with everything that applies to them, that then zoning administrator can go ahead and approve that plan without it having to come to the planning commission, uh, as an agenda item. We would still make you aware of what was done, just as we do now with reports and such, uh, but, uh, it would, it would not be on, on the planning commission agenda. Uh, the other element that this, this amendment does is, uh, taking a further advantage of our non-conforming sites section. And that section 12.5 was added in the, in the current zoning ordinance, to, uh, give us much more flexibility in working with, uh, if, uh, people that want to improve older sites. Uh, like, like frankly, the, the county's mature recovery facility is an older site developed many years ago. Uh, and, and we'll see in their report, we'll talk, it would be referencing that section. And what it does is it, it says that not everything in an older site has to be brought up to current standards, if, if improvements are decided, if somebody wants to add to a building or make other improvements to the site that require site plan approval. And it prioritizes a certain thing, public safety, first and foremost, uh, and then it has some broad categories, and it basically asks that at least three of the 10 broad categories be somehow addressed in the site improvements on that plan. So, that, the, the way, the way section 12.5 is currently worded, you as a planning commission make the decisions as to whether or not the, the, that section has been satisfied. But, in our ordinance, we have a, a minor site plan process, it's administrative in character. For the, for many smaller projects, they, they, they don't come to you, they, they are reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator. Uh, this would be small additions, parking lot expansions, and other things like that. Uh, and what we found is it's, it's very useful to, for the zoning administrator to also have that authority for those minor site plan projects, to be able to use the same section, so that in the same way, we can stay focused on these certain things, public safety and these, you know, these broad categories, uh, without necessarily having to require that every little detail, every shrub be, be added, uh, per our landscape standards, for example. And so, this, this amendment proposes to, uh, add authority for the zoning administrator to take action, uh, on these non-conforming sites, as it applies to minor site plans that come before him for, for review and approval. Those, that's the, the kind of, the, the, uh, high-level review of it. Uh, the change, uh, will have benefit in our review process, it will have benefit to the development community, because it certainly could take several weeks off, at least, off the approval process for, for a larger project. And, uh, it, it also rewards those, uh, project engineers and such that, that follow our ordinance. Uh, and, uh, and so we meet the requirements that are in the ordinance, and so it allows them to move swiftly through that final site plan process. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Rodney before we head into the hearing? Okay, we seem to be good. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, because this is a proposed change to the zoning ordinance, it, it is accompanied by a public hearing, and so, uh, public hearing has been duly announced. We wanna give everyone who wants to speak on the matter an opportunity to speak, so once we open the public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak on this topic is welcome to come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit at least your initial comments to three minutes. Once everybody who wants to speak is had an opportunity to speak, um, we'll consider recognizing people for additional comments. So the public hearing on the proposed text amendment, P-Tex 24-02, is open at 7:26. So the public hearing on the proposed text amendment, P-Tex 24-02, is open at 7:26.
There's nobody online.
Okay, so our, our online room is again empty. Any written comments received about this? Okay, so no written comments were received. And second call for public comments. I always, I always keep my ear primed for screeching, tire screeching in the parking lot if somebody's, you know, we don't want to cut people off unnecessarily. Last call for public comments. Okay, so let the record show that no public comments were offered, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:27. And now we're ready to move to our deliberation and action. Basically, we can either recommend this to the board of trustees for approval, we can recommend additional changes, or we can reject it, or we can postpone it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the board of trustees that the proposed amendments to Section 14.2 Site Plan Review and Section 12.5 Non-Conforming Sites of the Zoning Ordinance Number 20-06 be adopted as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Olver with a second by Gross to recommend that the proposed amendment be approved by the board as presented. Further discussion, or any discussion? We had a pretty thorough discussion about this, I think, last month, so it's not, and we didn't recommend any changes, so it's, we're just coming back to us in the same form we saw it before.
Peter feels good about it? Excellent.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call on this, please.
McDonald?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Baring?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Olver?
Yes.
Brown?
Epstein.
Uh, Squadrado?
Yes.
And Lamp?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, hopefully this will lead to more efficiency and better streamlining and all that good stuff. So now we're ready to move on to a preliminary site plan. This is for the Isabella County Materials Recovery Facility additions at 4208 East River Road. This is P-R-E-S-P-R 24-01. So we can start, we'll, we'll have introduction from Rodney, then we'll get, have the applicant give us any updates they'd like to do, and then we will proceed with our review deliberation and action.
Thank you, yeah, you should have our, our report dated the 6th of September. This is a great project that we have, can we afford it, of course, I hope that, share a little bit about the background of this, the application of it as part of why they're doing suspension. We've heard a lot about it at the staff level, as they've been looking through the details, and it really is a neat project. The plan before you is a preliminary site plan. As I mentioned earlier, this is what, what our ordinance would call a non-conforming site, that simply means it was developed many years ago under very different ordinance, so it may not, the existing site may not fully conform to our current ordinance requirements. In our report, on, it's page 45 of your packet, page two of our report, we just, we actually just included the, the language from Section 12.5 there. We noted that, that the applicant's plans are consistent with this section. We, we ask normally that the applicant actually address that on the plan, just simply have a note on the plan saying this is how we meet this section. They did not do that. We have talked to the applicant about, about the items in our report, and I know that they have plans to address these details in the final site plan. But what we found was they more than met the provisions of Section 12.5 in terms of the scope of improvements that, that they're proposing. There were a few, few details that, that, that need to be addressed, and none of which are anything that, that has a concern related to approving this preliminary site plan. These are all items that can be easily addressed on the final site plan. Some of them are simply notes that need to be addressed, like the comment about containment of debris on the site. It is an industrial property, it is a material recovery facility, there's going to be debris. It's, we just asked them to address how they're, how they're planning to, to deal with that as, as the scope expands. But as I said, all the items, we have notes for our items that are easily addressed in the final site plan. So with that, we're, we are very comfortable with recommending this project for, for preliminary site plan approval tonight. We, we've included in, in the report, basically a few recommended conditions that are just intended to address these, these details that would end up either being addressed to the final site plan, or in the case of the land combination, be addressed before building, building permit approval. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as we go along.
Any questions at the front end for Rodney? We're going to be hearing from the applicant as well.
In looking at the site, I didn't quite understand the land combination. I mean, it looked like there was a boundary area and everything was in the boundary area. Where is the overlap of boundaries?
So you have the, you have the main site, and then what you have is, is an old right way that extends off to the side, and actually goes all the way over the intersection of industrial river. That, that's actually a part of, part of the county's land, they own that stretch as well. And the reason we, what we recommended was that, that any areas that are outside storage for this facility should be on the same property.
Okay.
And so what we suggested was either combine the whole thing together, or simply do a boundary adjustment that brings in that outdoor storage area that's within that right of way into the property.
Any other questions right now? Okay, thank you. So we'll let the, let the applicant have the floor.
Hi, my name's Pete Lorenz, Lorenz Surveying and Engineering. I'm the civil engineer on the project. This is Jake Borton, the department director. I'll go over the technical part of the project, Jake's probably, not probably, is very well-suited probably to answer your other questions, but just some of the, the technical parts of it. We're planning on two separate building additions. On the west side, we've got about a little over 2,000 square feet, we're going to add on the west side. And on the south side, we've got an 8,400 square foot addition. Reason for this addition, and Jake can expand on this, I guess, if it's necessary, but there's an automated process for sorting that's going to, is the reason that the building needs to be expanded. Some of the site characteristics, as far as the detention basin, we do have an existing stormwater detention basin, it's on the west side of the site. It was built in the original project, and it was overbuilt a little bit, I think, because there is enough capacity in that basin already to accommodate this expansion that we're proposing. There are a few things we are proposing to do to that basin, and that there's quite a bit of vegetation that's grown up over the years, so we do need, want to go in and clear all that vegetation. There's some sediment that's accumulated in the basin over the years, so we'll be removing that sediment out of the bottom of it, but for the most part, the basin will stay the same way that it is right now. The asphalt, of course, we're going to have to add some more asphalt to get some driveways going up to our overhead doors. In addition to the asphalt going to the doors, you'll notice, and I think this is one of the items that Rodney was alluding to as far as, one of the site characteristics that we're going to improve is the truck turning movements going around the site. On the corner radiuses, you can see we're expanding those a little bit more, those are to improve the turning movements for the trucks going around the site. And then in the southwest corner, there's an area where we're going to build an area there for the trucks to drive into in order to, to back up onto the doors, into the doors, I should say. That is one of the areas that was on to, it's still county property, but it was on to a separate parcel, was, that was one of the areas for the reason of combining the parcels, as well as in the southeast corner, there's a little bit of outside storage there. That was on to a different tax parcel as well. This property is serviced by Township Utilities Sewer and Water. We have an eight-inch water service comes in off of River Road. Current building is sprinkled fire suppression. There are two hydrants on the site. We don't anticipate having to add any more hydrants, but that'll be an issue that we will seek the approval and recommendations of the fire department regarding the fire suppression. There's quite a few things going on this site, on this site, there's little buildings all over, containers and whatnot. If you're interested in more, what's the use of the certain areas, I want to point out, there is a legend on the site plan that shows you what each area is used for. And to back up a little bit, as far as the asphalt, on the south side of the building there, we are proposing 18 new parking spaces there. That is just a parking lot right now, where there are no existing parking in there. And that is for additional employees for this expansion. The only other thing I could think of is, I know in the, the staff report, the subject of relief for the sidewalk, we will be planning on applying for the relief for the sidewalk. There's no other sidewalks along that whole stretch of road, even out at Mission Road. There's no sidewalks along Mission Road, so we will be requesting that, I guess, based on the allowance for that. From the technical side of that, does anyone have any questions, or?
Don't seem to read it at the moment, but obviously you're going to be here, so, so if you want to proceed, that's fine.
Yeah, this facility was built with grant funding from Eagle in 1992 is when it actually went into production. 1991, the funding come in, or 1990, I think, the funding come in. The facility went online in 1992, and ever since, it's been a dual-stream facility that has served the county very well in its processing. But one of the things that the, with the changes in Part 115 at the state level, this is where I, as a director, have kind of looked to the future to say that, you know, we need to be able to, if we're going to have to change our solid waste plan to a material management plan, we have to look to the future, and the future of recycling is single stream. So the idea behind what we're trying to do is to move to a single-stream type of facility. That collection process, eventually, we as a county will move away from doing curbside collection, that'll get pushed back at some point to the major haulers for them to do, or at least I would expect. But that, them are, you know, that's, that's kind of a, a side note of everything that we have going on. One of the, one of the biggest things that we've done to be able to get to this point is, because of the material management planning process, I have actually had conversations with seven other counties, actually, I think 12 total. We have signed interlocal agreements from seven counties as it stands right now. So this is a massive regional planning area with Isabella County being the hub and spoke of that planning process. Keeping in mind that, when it comes to the planning process, it's not just recycling, it's everything that's included in material management, whether it's composting, whether it is household hazardous waste, electronics collections, all of that. But like I said, we have gotten seven other counties, we have a block of six in the center section, which would be Osceola Macosta, Isabella Claire, Gladwin Midland, and then our outliers are Ogumah County and Gretschu County. So as far as population is concerned, we're looking at about 550,000 person population of this material management plan. So it's, it's going to be a, a long and arduous process. We have three years to be able to get through that process, but the idea is, and the buy-in at this point from every county is that we will look at the ordinance as a place that will eventually move material through our facility to guarantee the fact that we as a county can continue to support recycling. We right now do take funding from the county of about 315,000. The projection out of it is within three to five years, we'll be able to eliminate that and be self-sustainable. Plus being, you know, and the hope is, is to be able to garner enough funding as an enterprise fund that we can continue to expand and do other things that we need to, as far as the amount of material coming in. The idea behind it is, is to, you know, like I said, improve the automation side of it. We have grant funding, as it stands right now, we have 900,000 from Eagle in an infrastructure grant, which is a $225,000 match, which I will be applying 2% funding from the Saginaw Chipmunk Tribe for that match, so there's no out-of-county pocket money for that. And then we also have, I will have a staff report in the next round of commission meetings that they will be hopefully signing a contract which finishes up an EPA grant under Swiffer for 1.149 million dollars of EPA money, which is a pass-through grant with the Saginaw Chipmunk Tribe. They'll be using about 300,000 of that to be able to do some things on their campus. The rest of it is passed through to the county for us to be able to purchase the equipment. So, and we're still continuing to look for more funding. We have, like I said, the other counties on board is helping on that. I have managed to put a grant writer on staff to be able to continue to support that prospect as well. Any other questions for me?
Questions? Just one quick one, I guess. You mentioned, I heard you say that at some point down the road, you'll get out of the curbside pickup business, and I guess pri, essentially privatize that to the waste management or whoever. Will, will folks still have the option of bringing their materials and dropping them off, or?
Absolutely. The biggest thing that we look at with that is, we will probably continue what is best practice, and then our depot sites are going to be best practice for us to be able, we have, as it stands, I have 11 depot sites within Isabella County. I expect that we would continue that process, and I'm sure that there'll be other conversations with our regional group now. Do we potentially set some recycling containers to some of these other counties? And we may, you know, I'm assuming that will happen, it's going to be a, a planning process, but there may be some chance that we would consider doing that as well. Another revenue generation for us. But by most certainly, we would look at continuing best practices in those sites. And the biggest reason that we would look at trying to move away from curbside collection is just that we're by no means experts. The amount of money that it would cost us to move to a single-stream collection at a minimum would be probably half a million dollars. One curbside truck is well over 400,000, for a recent trash truck that you see running down the street, they're about 430,000 dollars.
I guess, I don't want to belabor this, but I guess I'm confused, because when I hear single stream, and I think, okay, you're, the paper and the glass are together.
Yes.
So it's all just one pile?
Yes.
Why can't you just use the existing trucks for that? I mean, I know they have separate compartments, but you could put the same stuff in both compartments, right?
Yes, you can, but our trucks are, do not have the ability to compact that material.
Oh, okay.
So our trucks are, are actually set up to be a dual-string collection. We sort curbside, so I have my drivers that are standing there, curbside. sort curbside. So I have my drivers that are standing there curbside sorting that material. And then, and keeping in mind that trash and recycling is one of the most dangerous jobs in the country. If we can push that on, that liability onto someone else, I think, it is, of my and the county's opinion, is better than that. And like I said, the big thing is, is our trucks are not capable of handling the amount of material. A route off of something like this would be about between six and seven tons of material in one collection. Our trucks, if they were completely full, would be lucky if we could get a ton and a half, maybe two tons. So, you know, from a dollar standpoint, it's just not economical.
Other questions from folks? I was happy to see that somehow the, the need for a trash dumpster was decided not to be necessary on this particular site. Sort of have to argue about that.
He answered mine. The depots are still going to be there.
Yeah, you know, it's really our, it's something that we have continued to see as we tried to be able to do some education here and there. The amount of material that has increased off of the depot sites has been amazing. And we keep continuing to push all of that. You know, we, we did end two curbside contracts last year because it just did not make sense for us to do curbsides. And the two curbsides were Lincoln Township and Rollin Township. And we would drive 150 miles of roads in each of the townships and collect 1,000 pounds of material. So hence part of the reason why, you know, we're taking so much money out of the general fund. But, but in turn, on ending the contracts, we've also set up depot sites in both of them. And then depots have been just continuing to expand since we set them. We went from, in Lincoln Township, we went from one collection a week to two. Rollin Township, we've set an extra container, and we're still pointing that we, that one, I think, started out at once a month, and we're down to, I think, every other week. And we expect it to continue to get better.
Yes?
I do have a question to bounce off of that. When you say that you're going to be privatizing some of these things and passing off the liabilities to, to other collection companies, how, how is this going to affect the end user? Are they going to see any increase in costs or difficulties in getting their recycling to you guys? Or, or is this going to be a net positive benefit for them?
It's, you know, I'll be honest, it's not a question that I could really answer, because I can't tell you what the prices of product or price, cost point would be for, you know, curbside collection and a trash, trash pickup or recycling pickup. Not, not something that we do.
Okay. So, so currently, though, you guys have curbside. Does that, that, that does, for, for the end users, yes?
There is a contractual portion of that, yes.
Okay.
As it stands right now. I think Union Township, for example, is at 15 dollars, I don't, on, I, what's that?
Seventeen.
Is it seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, I knew, I have two different pricings on them contracts, and I've tried to get that fixed. But again, other issues to worry about.
We need to make note of the discount that we can make.
You know, so I don't know whether it would be an additional cost or not, other, above that 17 dollars as it stands right now.
Okay.
You know, I, to be honest, that contract is probably 10 years old, at least. No, I, I will rephrase that, in the fact that I know that my operations supervisor has been with me, or been with Isabella County for at least 18 years, and that was the reason she was hired. So that's how old that contract is. And, you know, I'm sure there's been some increases, but there's not been any increases on that contract since I've been the director for almost 12 years.
Thank you.
Since you're here, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege and just ask, is there ever going to be a market for recycling green and brown glass?
I have an email setting in my inbox that is looking to be able to collect that material. Part of that email is also that there's a $20 a ton tipping fee. So I'm already starting at a negative. And that's part of the reason why we only advertise as clear glass. And, and I'll be honest, if, there's the, some of the things that I have to look at with automation, I honestly would prefer not to collect glass at all. It's not to say that we wouldn't take glass. There's other options there for that. And then what, what it would end up being is, is that we possibly would set a container at the facility and glass would be more than welcome to be put into that container as a drop-off, so that not, we're not discouraging recycling of glass. But glass is a, is a major negative factor dollar-wise to that facility. When you start running belts, glass basically, as it breaks down to sand, you start cutting the steel up that the belts are running on, and you become a lot more maintenance-intensive. So that's why you'll see more and more places all the way across the state, all the way across the country, that does not allow glass in their street for that reason. There is, you know, there is, I can't tell you that it's not recyclable, because it is. It's just, dollar-wise, it's not recyclable in Isabella County.
Okay.
On, on ground, well, on covered glass. Clear glass, we still run at a negative, but we understand the importance to the resident on at least having some collection of glass.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? I could ask a million, but I won't.
It's all little wine bottles.
I wasn't going to make any references to my personal lifestyle, but I, I have this issue with green bottles. Any others? Any questions about the, about the plans? I mean, it's a very thorough, for preliminary, I mean, it's really pretty thorough, so.
Has there been any discussion of the increased truck traffic in the roads around there?
There is some, but it's not really going to be, there will be some increase. But keeping in mind that I already, 60% of the material coming into that facility is not through us. It is through the major haulers. So, you know, so we have that truck traffic there now.
Already.
Whether it's Waste Management, Republic Services, Granger, GFL, we already had that truck traffic coming in.
Okay.
And the other part of it is, is that we're starting to lose material in Isabella County because of the way the ordinance is written, that if we can process it, it's supposed to come through our facility. We can't really process single-stream material. And so that's the way that the major haulers are getting around in some of the outlier townships on bidding recycling. Is it bidding in single-stream, knowing that we can't haul it, so then they're not going against county ordinances to be able to take it outside of the county. Just so you know, the, what we're running right now is, we're running at about 5,000 tons a year, between 5 and 5,500 tons a year. The projection, on five-year projection process is to get us to somewhere around 25,000 tons a year. So massive influx in the amount
Thank you for the reminder to set my stuff out in the morning. Thank you.
Okay, we can have a motion if someone is so moved.
I move to approve the PRES PR 24-01 preliminary site plan dated August 22, 2024, for the 11,220 square foot additions to the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility at 4208 East River Road in the northwest quarter of Section 11 and in the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District. Finding that the site plan can comply with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including Sections 14.2.1p required site plan information and 14.2.1s standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions: Temporary relief from sidewalk construction is granted based on consistency with Section B.2 of the Sidewalk and Pathways Construction Policy Resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees on August 28, 2024, provided that the request and reasons for granting temporary relief are added to the final site plan. Resolve the remaining parking sidewalk, exterior lighting, debris cleanup, and non-conforming site details on the final site plan. And resolve the land combination or boundary adjustment application to bring all activities within the boundaries of one parcel prior to issuance, issuance of a building permit for this project.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Lapp with a second by McDonald. Any further discussion? Yes?
I have just a, a point of question. Does anything that we talked about with, in regards to changing Section 12.5 of our zoning ordinance affect this project in any way?
You're talking about the amendment that?
Yes, that, that just passed.
Well, that, actually, that amendment requires action by the Board of Trustees to be adopted. Actually, also requires an action by the County Planning Commission. They have a review, 30 days to review what we've, what we've recommended. So that, at the best, that amendment would not be going into effect until probably till early November, if, if the Board takes action on it in October. So nothing will change with what we have right now.
Okay.
But even if, even, even if it did, that, that amendment really only affects minor site plans that, that only are reviewed by the zoning administrator.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? So the motion is to approve the preliminary site plan with the conditions as stated. Roll call, please.
Over.
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Squadrado?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. So good luck with the project, and we'll...
Thank you.
Look forward to the...
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have two more business items. The first one is the discussion that was brought up earlier about the R1 versus I1 zoning district boundaries on the east side of South Isabella Road, north of East River Road, and consideration by us of whether we want to initiate a proposed rezoning of one or more of those lots. So you have a report from Rodney, but I'll let Rodney introduce it, and then we'll move into it.
Thank you. Actually, if I may, before we start, I just want to thank Brown for asking the question he asked, because normally with these text amendments, I mention what comes next after your action. And I did not do that with this one. And so I'm glad that you brought it up. It is a process. And so the County Planning Commission has, will have time to look at this over the next 30 days, based on what the state zoning act requires. And then it will actually come to the Board of Trustees for two meetings, a first reading and a second reading before it's adopted. With this, this item, as was mentioned, this came up last month during public comments. And we have to bring this back to you for this agenda to, to look at and consider the request from, from the neighbors of 975 South Isabella Road, and you've heard tonight from another neighbor, 943, about asking you to consider whether to initiate a rezoning action in this area. This, this site, east side of Isabella Road, North River, it's zone light industrial. As you can see, the second page of our report, it's, the master plan has part of it planned industrial. But it's basically the area south of 943, South Isabella Road. The area north of that, which includes 943, is actually planning rural buffer. So it's, there's more industrial zoning than, than the master plan designates for the future in that area. What we, what we provided to you in addition to that master plan excerpt were copies of the zoning ordinance as it existed, back in 1991, showing the larger industrial district, a copy of the current zoning map, this is on page 53 of your report, showing, showing rezoning action that took place in 2015, or the R1 district extended further south, and subject wrapped around, property to 943. And then just a copy of the, the, a copy of the Planning Commission minutes from that previous action. That action, 2015, was where the property owners sought the rezoning, in this case, to ask you to consider initiating. The, in our, in our report, we just, it's back, back to page 50, bottom of our, first page of our report, we just quoted this, the amendment section of the ordinance, which does give you the ability to initiate a rezoning if you choose to. The rezon, action can be taken by, to start with, the private property owner applying, but, but it is also completely appropriate for you or the Board of Trustees or staff to initiate a rezoning, if the, if found appropriate to, to proceed. So you do have full authority to take an action. You can also do nothing and invite the, the property owners to apply, and they can choose whether to do that for themselves. We did, just for reference, we, we asked the, the folks that spoke during public comment last time, because they had their comments written down, we asked them to provide them, so the rest of the pack is, is their comments from last week. So you had that. We're happy to answer questions as you go along. One thing I will mention, in addition to, where the master plan says that line is intended to be between the industrial area and rural area, I would also note that between the two properties that you've heard from, 975 and 943, between those, those owners and occupants, there is another property you haven't heard from. That's the one right in the middle there. It's a large property. And my suspicion is based on the ownership, is that property is partially owned as an investment, because it's owned industrial. Although, it has a house on it, they do have acreage, and they back up to other industrial properties that front on River Road, that aren't used for industrial purposes. So it is, it is a challenge, looking beyond the 975, it is a, that's a challenge to look at what we do with rezoning other properties in that area, because we have not heard from that, that large property in the middle If you have any questions, as you go along, here's also been a bunch of questions, especially on the history of this. But it's just something to consider, that if you're taking an action of your perspective, you do want to be aware of what, what that large property owner, you know, south of 943 is, is thinking about their site.
How many acres does this involve? The whole piece?
The whole industrial area?
No, the, the one requested.
Well, 943 is a small lot, it's less than an acre. 975 is, I think, even smaller lot. I don't remember the size of that one. That large property in between, I don't recall the number on it, but it's a number, it's a number of acres.
There's two behind it, right?
Yes, there's, there are existing industrial operations out there, front time, fairly large parts.
Are, are there only these three residential dwellings that are legal non-conforming within this industrial zoning?
I have the one on the corner as well. What is that? I've been working on that one.
The one on the corner is not residential.
It's not residential.
And would rezoning these residential properties allow them to be conforming if they were to be rezoned?
With regards to the two that you've heard from, but I know you were not here last month, I'm glad we included their, their comments from last month. 943 and 975, if they were rezoned to R1, they certainly would be conforming. The R1 district allows for keeping, allows for customary... rezoned to R1, they certainly would be conforming. The R1 district allows some customary agricultural activities, so include keeping of chickens and such. My concern is with that large property in the middle, is they do have, it's a house, they do have a large top building in the back. I haven't done any research as to how they're using that site. If there's anything going on there, it might be beyond a residential, but it is a large site that would be suitable for an industrial activity.
If a rezoning were initiated, what would the outreach be then to that particular property owner?
Well, they will certainly get notice of the hearing. We have to provide that. Certainly, if, my thought would be is if you're interested in pursuing rezoning, I think the first step might be to invite that owner to come in and talk to the planning commission, talk to you, before we take the formal action to actually start the rezoning process. So, at least give them an informal opportunity to speak and share their thoughts.
Could the other two be rezoned and the one you're referring to not be, and that all works out fine, or does that complicate?
Well, if you look at, if you look at page 51, that master plan, I put the addresses there, you see 931 is the property that was rezoned back in 2015. You see 943 there, and that one, if that were to be rezoned to R1, it would be consistent with master plan. The property is part of that rural buffer area in the master plan. It also is a beat in clean line between the two zoning districts, because it winds up below the properties of front on River Road. So, 943, I think it does make very good sense to consider the change, whether the applicant applied for it, or if you were to initiate something. 975 is not the corner piece down at River, but it's just up from the corner, it's next door to the corner. So, you can see it's kind of more in the middle of that industrial area, and surrounded by larger parcels. And that one is more of a challenge, because there, you basically, we have a term, it's a legal term called spotzoning, I think we've talked about it before. It's not a, it's not a term in our zoning ordinance, but it's the idea of creating a small patch of some zoning that's incompatible with the surrounding. It's just, literally a spot within a larger space, or something else. And I think I would be a little concerned about this, with that small lot, surrounded by industrial sites. It certainly would affect the industrial, because we have language in our ordinance that talks about screening and such, related to industrial or commercial activities, as it relates to residential districts. So, if this were to be rezoned to residential district, additional screening or additional setbacks might apply to the properties around there.
And the difference, you spoke about this last month, but I want to make sure I understand. If the planning commission initiates the process, how is that different from if the property owner does?
Well, we don't have an applicant, it's simply the township taking this action. The steps are all the same. Township pays the cost out of our general fund for all the public notices, for the, all the activities that are associated with that action. But the same notices apply. It starts with a hearing at the planning commission, it starts before that with the public notice being published in the newspaper, as we publish once, at least 15 days before the hearing. And it also has to be mailed out, at least 15 days before the hearing, to all the property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. So, whatever our property is, if we're going to be zoning, they can draw a circle around that, and everybody within 300 feet would get that notice. So, that would include properties like Dalefield on the other side of Isabella. It would also include most, if not all, of this area that's zoned industrial on the east side. It might miss the far east parcel on River. But anyway, those notices go out, they have the applicant come in and take a look at the application, and obviously make any comments on the action. Typically, the notice would describe what's being proposed, and we'd have a map as well that would show it visually. And the rest of it is your hearing, you make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Any rezoning action also gets a county planning commission review, through the state zoning act, as we talked about with the tax amendment, and then it goes to the Board of Trustees for their final action, and they would decide ultimately whether to approve it or not.
Is there a precedent of the planning commission initiating a rezoning in a case like this, in a residential? Harry?
It's interesting. It is certain, as our ordinance says and the state law says, you have the authority to initiate a rezoning process. The applicants have indicated a financial concern, but they didn't submit their own application. The, in our, in that amendment section, there's some, there's some language in there that's there specifically for you when you're considering rezoning actions, that talks about, essentially talks about criteria that you should consider as to whether or not this rezoning action is appropriate to recommend for approval or denial, or whether it makes sense. It's more or less a set of questions, about existing zoning, talking about the proposed zoning, what are all the uses in those districts appropriate? There's various pieces in it. But one of the sections talks about, are there errors, are there errors in the map that should be corrected? Also, are there changes in conditions that warrant a rezoning? That things have changed since the zoning was put in place. And those are, so those are, typically those are reviewed when you're looking at application from somebody else, but it would apply to this case as well. And if you were, even if you initiate a rezoning, you still recommend that you use those criteria to look at whether it's appropriate. In this case, as you've seen, the master plan, the master plan recommends a smaller industrial area than its current zone. And there has been, in the past, in 2015 anyway, a rezoning action that was taken that reduced the industrial area from an even broader area. So, are there changes in conditions? Certainly could be seen that way. Is this, if this proposed change for, at least for 943, be consistent with master plan? It seems to be, those are valid reasons to consider making a change.
Can we step back a second and talk about the reason why this is even in front of us? One thing that is not addressed by any of the statements of the people who spoke at the last meeting was the fact that there was a complaint about the chickens and the ducks and whatever else was on the property. And I live in a subdivision, so I'm very aware of how I impact my neighbors and how my neighbors impact me, because we're closer together. In a rural area, you're often a little further apart, but that doesn't still mean that people, you know, have the right to not have things on their property that aren't necessarily, that belong to other people, like dogs, chickens, you know, running free. You know, it's a rural area, maybe you should expect that, but if someone made a complaint, and then we award the person for whom the complaint was made about, it seems like we're not responding to the initial complaint. We're supporting the people who are causing the complaint, and that seems wrong to me. Like, there's no recognition that, you know, maybe they, people need to think more about fencing and containment, so that if they do have animals on their property, their animals aren't, you know, impacting other people in the area. Now, you know, we all have deer on our property, we can't do anything about that. But if it is a domesticated animal, then, right, you might be more concerned about having that on your property. I don't know exactly what the deep level of detail was with the complaint, if it was just because there were chickens, and it was outside of zoning, or if it was because the chickens were making incursions into other people's property. But it seems like that would be useful to at least consider.
Well, and I'm going to ask Peter to talk a little bit more about the complaint specifically, but I'll just start with, remember, there are two properties, and in these monthly reports that you've been reading, there's been one item that's spoken, and that's in reality because we had complaints about both properties, and the animals and chickens and ducks, whatever, that were on both properties. Peter, if you don't mind, kind of give us a little more background.
So, when I received the complaint, I did go up to the site. In general, though, just so you have the context, in general, it doesn't matter whether the animals are contained or not, they are not a permitted use in the industrial district. So, I found two different examples. One, sight, the animals were being more contained than the other, which is helpful, but both are still in violation because they're not permitted at all. We do have the exemption in residential districts, excluding the R1, you know, for like R2, R2B, R2A, where you can have a limited number of chickens for, you know, educational purposes, and we do regulate specifically where they have to be located, they have to be enclosed, they have to be contained. For areas agricultural or R1, where there's customary agricultural operations are permitted, you know, you follow to the best practice guidelines of the state as far as, you know, keeping your farm animals on your property and contained. So, the real, you know, issue is, you have industrial property, and you have farm animals, and so part of the complaint was, you know, they were seeing animals wandering all over, but even if you contain them in an industrial district, they are a violation, so.
What regulations would there be, the ones you were just talking about, you know, versus R1, R2, A, B? If this was changed, would this fall under those regulations, so they would have to be responsible for the containment? Or is it going to be in one of them where it's just kind of-
So, in this part of the township, and I think it's on page 52 or 51, one of the two that shows you the map, you have the two zoning districts. You have industrial to the south, and you have R1 to the north. The further you go north on Isabella Road, you get agricultural. So, the zoning that we would want, if you're going to do this to residential, would be R1. If we do an R2A, R2B, that would be too much of a dense population change for that area. An R2A, R2B would be better suited in more densely populated residential areas. So, the R2A, R2B, those would have the more restrictive rules on, you know, certain number of, you know, farm animals for educational purposes, but in the ag and the R1, there isn't, that we'd regulate.
So then, if we were to rezone it to, we'll just say, the R1, they would not be in violation as they would be if it was light industrial, but they would be in violation as far as the containment of the animals?
That's an interesting question. Remember, the R1, the permitted use is customary agricultural operations, which is the same permitted use in the act district, it's farming, animal husbandry. And so, our ordinance does not, does not regulate that, other than to say where that, where farming and customary agricultural operations are permitted uses. We don't have any additional standards for farming. That, as Peter said, there are state guidelines generally accepted agricultural management practices. Those are voluntary standards, they're highly recommended best practices, but we do not require them to follow, we really can't require them to follow. But just as a farmer can have free range chickens, larger operation, a small operation could conceivably have them loose. Typically, the chickens, you don't want them running loose anyway, because they tend to disappear. They tend to, things tend to make lunch out of them. So, there are good reasons not to have them running free. That doesn't mean chickens don't escape. If you don't put their wings, they eventually can, they can get up, they can get out of a fenced enclosure, and then roosting in a tree or something. The, so, but if it was, if it was rezoned to the R1, it would be considered that customary agricultural activity, and we would not be regulating the character of the enclosures. As Peter mentioned, we do have this allowance, very limited allowance in the more dense residential areas in township, for a few chickens, and the language in the ordinance is for educational purposes. And that we do regulate, we do make clear those have to be contained, but it's because it's a denser neighborhood, and it's a tight area, and it's a non-farming activity in that case. You know, what I will say about this request, ordinance violation, the goal of any ordinance violation situation is to bring the property back into compliance. We work with people to do that. We have some cases that have taken months to resolve, because health issues or whatever, it may be moving very slowly. But if they're moving in a positive direction, we work with people and try to help them get the resources they need to finish the job. One, in this case, one of the ways that both of these property owners, that noted in our enforcement reports, could conceivably resolve their violation is a rezoning action. That doesn't mean you need to initiate it, but that is certainly a path that they can take, because as was said, if we zone R1, these would be agriculture activities, and would be allowed, there would no longer be a use violation. So, it is certainly appropriate for them to come to you with the requests they've made, and it would be also equally appropriate for either of the property owners to apply themselves to seek a rezoning action, pursue it that way as part of correcting the problem. I will tell you, and I don't recall if Peter said it or not, but the one property, 975, has been reducing, they've been removing animals from the property. And so, that's part of correcting the violations, they've been gradually removing, removing the violation that way. So, that's also really appropriately a solid problem. Those considerations are simply part of their efforts to solve the violation.
Would the chicken's residence be considered a detached accessory dwelling unit, or am I just moving ahead in the agenda?
You are moving ahead. It is an accessory structure.
Yes.
But unless somebody is sleeping out there, and has a kitchenette, bathroom, you will not get into that.
It's a pretty good flock of chickens. Mr. Chairman, I would be inclined to entertain the planning commission initiating a rezoning in this case.
Okay. Well, we, I'm assuming we would take some sort of motion, but if I could, though, just, I had a couple of questions, if you bear with me. So, do we know, I'm assuming you know the source of the complaints?
That was my question. Well, all of our, unless a person avails themselves to public, all complaints that I receive are anonymous.
Okay. They're anonymous to us, or anonymous to you?
They're not anonymous always to me, they do give their name.
Okay. I guess my point is simply, there's, if this is accurate, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots immediately south of 943 and 931. There's the two larger ones to the east, but there's five in that little area closest to the intersection. If it's one of them, then why would we go down a path that's likely to lead to significant objections, you know, from people in the immediate vicinity? I mean, maybe we would, but it seems like that would be, you know.
I'm just kind of back and forth on it, because part of, like, initiating it gives them the opportunity to, you know, know that that's what they want, speak their mind about what they want, and then have it resolved. But then the other side of it is, you know, what you just said, so I'm kind of back and forth on it from the aspect.
Yeah.
I would like to add that, based on looking at the current zoning map and the master plan future use, I can see that the land at 943 does coincide with our master plan, and in my opinion, I think it would, it would be under our, like, our interests to do a zoning motion for that, simply because that's part of our plan, and that we, like, we would get to that as part of the planning board. The other properties, I'm less convinced of, like she said, like you said, like, we don't know who initiated the complaint, we don't know if these property owners necessarily want to be zoned for R1. We would invite them to come in and speak their piece. So, I'm not convinced that we should, like, just go all in, but I do see a way for us to initiate something for that specific property, just for that specific property just because of, uh, the master plan.
It does seem very odd that they decided, whatever year that was, to rezon part of that and then still leave that one little piece. It doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and, and the fact that there are so many non-conforming, uh, residential units within this industrial piece that abutes the, uh, the rural buffer that, that we've specified, um, it almost seems like an oversight. But I, I have no context of the history, so I, I can't say for certain.
Well, remember, the twenty fifteen action was an application by the owner of the property, nine thirty-one, the property to the north of, of nine forty-three. Uh, so, so they were, they were, they made, they made a request. We'd like to rezone our property. It was considered and it was acted on, and that's, that, you know, certainly, we as a township, uh, when that was done, we could have looked at, say, really, we ought to add this one in too, and, and we could have done that, if, if it is a legitimate thing. Or we could have said, you know what, keep your application, we'll do both of them. But, but typically, when a, when an application goes in, it's simply, that's the, the thing that's reviewed, and so we don't really look at, add it to it.
I feel like I, sorry, Phil.
No, I was just gonna say really briefly in, in relation to what Commissioner Brown just said. The master plan is currently under revision. We're working, it's being worked on. And one of the things that is, we're gonna have to look at is the future land use map. And so it's possible that we could make changes at that time, uh, but go ahead.
No, I was just gonna comment, I think agreeing with Commissioner Brown. I'm not sure, you know, the nine forty-three, us, us initiating on that parcel makes a little bit of sense. But the other, I, I can't, uh, I mean, to square up that corner, but I just don't know that we should be initiating, uh, a rezoning on, it would impact so much of that industrial area, create an island, actually.
Yeah, what, I just need a review, 'cause I wasn't here last time, obviously, and I'm getting confused. What, just a quick review of what the request is for nine seventy-five?
So, so, uh, as I said, there are two properties that are in this ordinance violation, nine forty-three, which is that northern property.
Yep.
Uh, and then nine seventy-five, which is, might say, in the middle of that industrial area. It's, it's one property north of the corner at River River.
Yep, I've got it marked myself, 'cause I kinda figured that out.
And I apologize, I should, I should have just marked these, although we were talking last month about nine forty-three, I should have just marked the other ones as well. So you, you've had a formal request last month in form of a, with a public comment, uh, to ask you to consider taking a township initiative action to rezone nine forty-three.
Not nine seventy-five.
You heard today, uh, in public comment from the, from the other, other, uh, property owner at nine seventy-five, and she's, she made the same request essentially, uh, to at least consider, uh, that property as well. Now.
That helps, thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's sort of where we are. Both are under ordinance violation issues, both could be, that's the way to resolve it. It's R one, I'd say that's the best way to resolve it, but that is a solution. But, uh, it, it, even though they make a request, doesn't mean you need to take any action at all. Simply invite them to submit their own applications, and they will be reviewed and acted on.
I have no problem with nine forty-three, although Commissioner Lapp has said something that's very interesting is that someone has made a complaint of the animals. Is it big? Is it little? You know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna negate that. That should be definitely something in our consideration, so maybe that's something for the property owner to commit to taking care of that, I, I, you know. So if we do that, essentially, they may or may not decide to do anything about it. So now if I was that person that had the complaint, I would, I would actually have a leg to stand on and be pretty upset about that. Nine seventy-five, I definitely would like to know, uh, the story with the other seven pro- or the other six properties. You know, what are they exactly? I have no issue with taking that into cons- all of it into consideration, but out of respect for the other property owners, I, I think we need a little more information, so. I, I don't know what we could get from the property owner of nine forty-three, if we could even ask that if we do move forward with that property, would they commit to working on the complaint issue? I don't know, is that, is that something that's possible that we can ask?
Just maybe a question of inquiry, but we could, we could change that in, in the master plan process, couldn't we? That you had suggested, uh, nine forty-three?
Well, you can, so what I was, what I was saying was, currently nine forty-three is in the rural buffer. You could make all of those rural buffer that are to the east of, of Isabella.
So we don't spot zone, we don't wanna spot well.
Well, are, are you suggesting that we, that we change, uh, the, the R one zoning to include restrictions on the agricultural usage?
I don't think we can do that.
I don't. I mean, I.
But then it would impact all.
That would, that would impact, like, all R ones, yeah.
And the entire township.
Yeah.
We have, you know, we, we don't have a general allowance for chickens in, in, associated residence. As I said, we have, uh, in rural residential case, it's, we simply call them customary agriculture activities, treated like farming. The, the, the more intensive districts, we have what Peter described, which is a very narrow, uh, scope of activity. Some, some communities have expanded allowances for chickens, say, you know, for recognition, eggs, uh, and meat potentially. Uh, you know, raise it yourself, you know where it comes from, and, uh, it could be less expensive. I'm not sure if that's really true. But, but it could be, but it certainly, you know, what you've been feeding them, uh, when you dig. So, you know, we could amend the ordinance to have a non-farm keeping of certain kinds of farm animals, uh, added as allowable use and have a set of standards that apply, that could get into things like, uh, how they're, they're managed, how they're contained or what, but there, uh, in my consulting world, I've written those, those types of ordinances a number of times and certainly enforce them in a number of communities. It's, it's another conversation, uh, but, but it certainly could be done, and it could apply in whatever districts we wish it to apply to, uh, including the R one.
If the commission initiates an amendment, do the neighbors then have an opportunity, is there a hearing there, public hearing, where they can comment and fill us in rather than our speculating about what they may or may not think or complain about or?
Yes, actually, you, you would hold a hearing and they, every, all the properties around with the treaty, if you were to get that notice fifteen days ahead of morning.
Yeah. So then we could request that public hearing on this issue, and that would put everything into the sunshine, and then we could make a determination on a recommendation regarding nine forty-three specifically, based on that.
Good, and it certainly may bring out.
That seems to make sense to me.
Yeah.
My question, my question would be, if we did that, to Peter's point about the confidentiality of who's, who's complaining, who's the complainant, would we be unintentionally, um, exposing who that complainant is by virtue of saying, come to a public hearing and complain when they came and complained?
It's an interesting question. Uh, we, we, as was, as was mentioned, we, we tried to, at first, uh, let me step back. Whenever there's an ordinance violation, it would give a notice of violation. In, in many cases, the first question that's asked is, who complained? I wanna know. And, and our answer to that is, it really doesn't matter who complained. Even if there wasn't a complaint, if we simply drove by and saw this, we, we would have to let you know you have a violation. So let's, let's, let's focus on violation and how can we get it corrected? So we, we kinda turn people. Some people, they've gotta know, and so they'll, you know, anybody can file a Freedom of Information Act request, and they can request document, documents that were, that were, the complaint may, may be documented, uh, or record, you know, of that complaint, that might include that information by who made the complaint. So while we prefer to just simply focus on the violation, get it corrected and, and celebrate it, the complaints are not really known. When somebody gives us a name, we create a record, uh, and we, in our system, we have a reformation section for these, these right. Somebody can ask for that information. I don't know that, that there's a real issue here, but if we have a public hearing and the property is around, whoever they are, whether they complain or not, come in and, and, and speak their piece or give you something of writing, that, there's, they're not really outing anybody. The neighbors expressing their opinion.
Could I ask a question? So, uh, I hear what, what Commissioner Oliver's saying. I mean, one option is to just go ahead, you know, start the process, have the public hearing, you find out what everybody thinks, and then you make up your mind. There is a certain amount of expense in that, and there's a certain amount of effort in that. Is there any precedent for a, a municipality of any kind in a situation like this? Just looking and saying, okay, there's, there's eight properties that are, that are currently zoned industrial in that area. Draft a letter saying, there's been, there's been interest among some people in possibly rezoning this property to R one. Township is kinda looking at it. What do you think?
Yeah, I, I will say, it doesn't come up too often, uh, but there's some reason why we could do it. If you wanted to pass a motion that, that asked us to have to put together an informal invitation to those property owners to share their thoughts, we'll have some kind of summary, I don't know if I should just describe it. We can certainly do that, too, but it's not, not a, a number of properties. And most of the letters are already written and what, the information is already shared, uh, so it would be easy to put that kind of invitation.
It would make a lot of sense for that one, that sandwich between the two properties in question, because if they have no strong feelings, then that would make our job a lot easier than if that person had a very strong feeling about keeping it light industrial for future potential development.
You may still get the, the angry crowd, you know, if there are some folks that don't like this, and they're, you know.
It would be nice to know.
Yeah, we would be including some properties that I suspect they are owned because they're industrial, so they're invested.
I had asked the, the question at the end of the last meeting, because there is a violation. And, you know, I was moved by the family and their desire to keep their birds. So while this is under consideration, they, would they get to continue in their current lifestyle? Or, you know, are we gonna force four kids to get rid of their favorite birds because we can't make a decision on whether or not, you know, to initiate a zoning action?
I will say that if, if they had applied for rezoning, the enforcement activity would have been put in abeyance until that rezoning completed the process, whatever that ended up being. Similarly, Peter is more like, if you might call it informal abeyance right now, as this is before you. I'm a little concerned that if we open this up broadly to all those properties and we start getting to almost a neighborhood planning effort, maybe that's what it will become.
That's a different process, yeah.
That's, that's months, and that, that, that may not really get us where we need to go in a reasonable timeframe. So I guess my thought would be, if, if you're interested in pursuing something, uh, my, my suggestion would be is to perhaps pursue, initiate a rezoning of the property at nine forty-three for the reasons that were mentioned about the master plan inconsistency with it. That, that process is going to notify at least some of the surrounding property owners of, of this, you know, of this change. And so you'll at least, you get at least some of them that may come in and, and talk about their concerns or thoughts. It will not get all of them, but it will get you some of them.
And it would halt the, the effort to have them remove their birds temporarily until a decision's made, or no?
Well, as I said, if, uh, for nine forty-three, if, if you are, if you initiate a rezoning, we will, we, we, the enforcement action would simply pause while that takes place, because that is a potential way to solve the violation. I, I'm a little concerned about the broader informal approach with the letters, only because, as I said, it will really become kind of a neighborhood planning effort, and it will likely raise other issues, uh, if we, uh, if it's on process.
Still could be a step two to looking at that particular area, but doesn't resolve the particular question here on nine forty-three.
Right, and that's something we can do as we're working, uh, more on the master plan. We certainly can focus on a certain areas that will, uh, have more attention.
Okay, I recognize Commissioner Brown.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to, yes, echo what Commissioner Oliver said and, um, and, and say that, like, we could potentially go for a, a two-pronged approach where, uh, due to the nature of, of the property on nine forty-three, we would initiate a zoning action for that and then further go on to, um, inquire and, and maybe do a fact finding on the rest of the properties as, as a separate motion, um, to see if it is worthwhile to rezone, uh, rezone part or all of that, those properties to better conform with our land use and, uh, the property owner's wishes.
You, um, Rodney, you said some of the properties that are facing, that are fronting onto river are already light industrial.
They are, yeah, so in fact, uh, you, I don't recall if there's any houses over there, but essentially the properties that front on, on the river are used for.
Okay, so it's really only the one that fronts on Isabella that's between the two properties in question that we really wanna get that information from? Can we target that person with the letter and say, this is what, you know, this action has come up, we're rezoning, we're requesting rezoning the property north of you. There has been a request to, to rezone the property south of you. Are you at all opposed to? Or find some wording that we could at least find out from that property owner if there's particular wishes? Because if that owner was willing, then that would, I think, make it easier to, for us, again, easier for us to make a decision. Rather than, I, I agree that opening up, I don't think people who already have light industrial businesses are gonna wanna even entertain the notion of, of switching to an R one. So what's the point in asking? But that one that you're not sure of, I think it, it seems like poking and finding out whether that person, what that person really thinks would be helpful rather than just saying, oh, let's just rezone.
But what, certainly if you, if you initiate a rezoning at nine forty-three, they would definitely give those, so next one.
Right, but it doesn't impact them necessarily, other than that it's now rural, but it's not them. But if you, if you find out from them, hey, you know, there is some interest in potentially rezoning other, other parts of this section, do you have an opinion on that? Can we ask that question? I mean, can we request that information, or is that?
I, I would just note that if, if you get it, when someone receives a notice from me about a rezoning, if they are concerned about it, they call or they come. So when they see a, a notice that says, well, it, it, it shows where the, I've, I've, you know, and I have to educate our citizens. Sometimes they think, when I show them the buffer, they think the entire three-hundred-foot buffer is gonna be rezoned, and they're asking me, why are you rezoning my property? Hey, I don't want my property rezoned. And I have to let them know that it's, they're just within the buffer of being notified. So, um, anyone who has a concern of, from a rezoning from industrial to residential, um, just our standard notice that we give them, they will, if they're interested, they will come and they'll call and they'll contact us.
Do we know whether that person, was it the same, the, the property between nine forty-three and nine seventy-five, was it the same property owner in twenty fifteen, and do we know whether they had any reaction to the rezoning that took place immediately to the north of them at that time?
I'll wait to have it, twenty fifteen, and over those media minutes.
I mean, I know, I was on the commission then, but I have no memory of it, so. I looked at the minutes, so.
Was the complaint, can you tell me if the complaint was that they were not, uh, they were the birds being on the property or that the birds were on, off of their prop- off of the, their home property?
Well, I mean, you've seen, uh, in the monthly report, I mean, if you've had several months, it's been in there. And, uh, in reality, as Peter said, the key thing is, they're not wild in the industrial district, period. It doesn't matter if they're free or caged.
Right, but those are two different kinds of complaints. It's one complaint to say, hey, that person's not doing the right stuff on their property, and I'm complaining about it, and I have done that on my, in my subdivision. Um, but, uh, another, another complaint is, hey, those chickens are in my yard, and I'm complaining because that, those people's chicken, that, those people shouldn't have chickens, and now those chickens are in my yard. It seems like those are two different kinds of complaints.
And the reason why I'm asking is if, is, if that's the complaint where they're just in my, on my property, rather than having, if, if we were to move forward with this, rather than making a big deal about putting a restriction, just put a general restriction that the, your animals need to be contained on your property, however you wanna do it. And I don't know if that's.
Is that the role of the planning commission though, or neighborly behavior?
When, and there are, I, I think Mr. Gross could probably tell, tell us better about the, the rules related to farm animals running amok. But, uh, I mean, there are rules, uh, about, you know, letting farm animals run amok on neighbors' properties. It's trespassing essentially, just as if your kids went on the neighbor's property and they weren't supposed to be there. Or you yourself decided to take over a property. you yourself decided to take over part of your neighbor's front yard and hang out there. It's trespassing, period. And it certainly could be addressed that way. I don't know that, we do need to try carefully in the way of regulating farming activities, in terms of, right, Farm Act of Michigan. I respect it greatly, I respect farmers greatly. We certainly can regulate non-farm keeping of farm mammals, like chickens, and whatever. I've written all the way up to emails, by the way, in terms of, because I actually had a community with her, somebody wanted emails. So, and they have, very small or very large in terms of regulation. But it is, we need to try carefully, especially when we're talking about a property that where agriculture activities are allowed to exist.
I'd like to try to solve the problem that we can solve initially, before we solve the problem, we might be able to solve eventually. So, if we can focus just on 943 and initiate a rezoning on behalf of the property owner and begin the conversation.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion. I'm not sure the wording that's going to best suit you, and I'm amenable to friendly amendments to it, but...
I would just simply say a motion to initiate a rezoning of the property 943 South Isabelle Road from the I-1 district to the R-1 district.
There you go.
I second that motion.
Okay, so there was a motion made by Oliver with a second by Brown to initiate a rezoning of property at 943 South Isabella, is that right? Yeah, South Isabella. Further discussion? Already had a lot of discussion. Any further discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, this is, I think that making an initiative on 943 is correct, but I would really be concerned about the other parcels with respect to the complaint, the folks that have the industrial. And, you know, it just seems like for us to initiate something further, I don't think it'd be appropriate, because I'm not, I'm not sure that we should be reducing our industrial lands.
I would like to echo Commissioner Lapp, her question about the nature of the complaint, and Mr. Nanny saying that a violation of the zoning is different than a violation of personal property. And if the complainant has an issue with unrestricted livestock in their property, they could go after a trespass complaint, which I think is very valid and a good way of solving that issue, that both allows for us to continue forward with the rezoning initiative, and then also allows for the complainant to get their concerns addressed.
Okay. Other comments on the motion? So, once again, the motion is to initiate the rezoning for 943. It's been moved and seconded.
Just 943.
Yes, just 943. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Shingles.
Yes.
Lapp.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Tharing.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Squadrado.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right. We'll definitely have more discussion about that area, like, with the future land use and so forth, so. All right. The last item is another discussion item, which came more or less directly out of something we did last month, where we had a project that involved an accessory dwelling. But, it's not, it's not an urgent thing, in the sense that it's really something we asked you to look into and bring us to. So, you know, whether we want to get too far into it tonight or not, but, you know, you prepared the report, so if you want to walk us through it, but...
I agree. This was really intended just for your bedtime reading pleasure. Certainly, we can talk about it. But there actually, as I did do some, did some looking into some of the sources that were available, and there were some interesting ones. One I'd actually like to mention for all of you, as more general, there's that link on the front page, item four there, that refers to a link from an older article from the Planning Commissioners' Journal. This is an online publication. It was, I think it started as a magazine. It became an online publication. There are, if I recall correctly, something like 600 articles in their inventory of information. It was a journal specifically written for planning commissioners, and in many cases, written by planning commissioners with experience. It was a publication of a man, it was run by a man named Wayne Sendville, who has since retired. And he found he had so many requests, after he shut the business down, because it was a private business, after he closed things down, he had so many requests for reprints of these articles, that he decided to basically provide a community service, and he posted all of them on the website. And the link there is to Planning Commissioners' Journal. You can also just type in Planning Commissioners' Journal, you'll find it. And it's, there's tons of articles around many, many subjects. And while some of them, like the one I shared with you, it's actually fairly old, I've found that the information that they provided really is timeless, that they've done, they did a great job when they shared the original information. But even today, much of it is still completely valid. And much of it is aimed at how to be a great planning commissioner. There's information that, you know, are you a new planning commissioner? Here's how to get started. You know, here's some things to be aware of. There's one article, as I recall, that, it's just a small, like one or two paragraphs from various people, that then link to other articles that they were, either they wrote, or they recommend, so you can find a whole bunch of stuff very quickly, even with that one article. But I encourage you to take a look at it. It's a great site. You may find that, you may find more reading material that's very helpful, too. But like I said, especially the focus on how to be successful as a planning commissioner, and how to be successful as individual commissioners. They have a lot of great advice and counsel on that site. And like I said, if you, if you have the opportunity to send a note, if you like what you see, share with the owner, Wayne Sendville, your appreciation, because this is literally his service, in his retirement, to share this. And it's not cheap to keep that database up. I happen to become acquaintances with him over time, as we've communicated back and forth with him, so I've had the opportunity to get to know him a little bit. It's a great resource. In the same way, the piece here that was sponsored from AARP, that one, I gave you just a small chunk of it. But on the last page of it, you'll see the links, which are live in the PDF version, to much more. And it's pretty good stuff. In the case of AARP, they're advocating for these things, so you have to kind of take that as it is. They're not a neutral source, like the Planning Commissioners' Journal. But nonetheless, they provide good information. So, it's worth taking a look. You know, I don't know that we need to do anything. I mentioned in our report, at the bottom of the first page, one thing we could do, if we wanted to make a change, would be to eliminate the special use requirement for accessory dwelling units in the R2A and R2B districts. Those are the more dense residential districts. And the only reason is because we also allow duplexes in that same zoning. So, it's not really that much difference between the two. So, that is a simple change we could make, that would at least make it easier for some folks to have the accessory dwelling. It really wouldn't have changed the one case we had last month, but it might affect some other people that would be interested.
Okay. Yeah, so this is really kind of more just a backburner type of thing, because the folks last month were wanting to build something, but it had to be connected to the main house through, with a heated, like, passageway or something. They had to build an extra passageway for what they were trying to do, and they were kind of a little bit bent out of shape about that. But I would say read through it, and just kind of keep it in the back of your minds for kind of future, for future possibilities.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
I do have just a couple of questions on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, I read through a lot of the literature. I could not find anything specifically. These ADUs and their requirements, is there a requirement for an improvement to be considered an ADU, to have an external egress? And I ask that because I noticed that some of the literature suggested that people converting things like over the top of a garage, or a basement, into having kitchenette, bathroom, bedroom, would consider an ADU. But is there a requirement for an external egress for it to qualify as an ADU?
Yeah. So, you kind of hit right into some of the discussion we had last time. The, basically, to, for our ordinance, say, would be considered accessory dwelling unit, it does need to be an independent dwelling. It needs to be able to be self-sustaining for that family without accessing the rest of the house.
Okay.
Because in our case, in our ordinance right now, we do not allow these as separate structures. We only allow them within the principal building.
Okay.
So, we often have the case where folks, let's say, those cases where you might be, have multi-generation, may have elderly parents moving back in with you, or adult children that want to have sort of semi-independence. Rather than creating a separate dwelling unit, they essentially create an extra master suite. They might have a kitchenette in it, might have a bathroom, you know, of course, in a city area, but it's still part of the house. It's, you know, it's off the same hallway, you know, it's the rest of the house. It connects into the rest of the house. So, it functions, as they may call it, semi-independent, but it's not a, we wouldn't call it accessory dwelling. We simply call it part of the house.
Okay. Okay, that answers that question. And then you mentioned that, like, we have a special use permit, or we're considering a special use permit for the R2A and R2B zoning. What is currently the R1 zoning? I know that that's kind of, they're very related. Is there anything like that?
Yeah, so right now, in the page 66 of your packet, if you see the land use table there, this is the table that basically says, as land use is down the left-hand column, the columns for each of the zoning districts.
Okay, okay.
And right now, accessory dwellings are special use in any of the residential districts there that you see. What we would, what I'm suggesting in our report is, one easy change is to actually remove the special use requirement from those that are R2A and R2B, where the two family or duplex dwellings are also allowed by right, you know, simply with a permit.
Okay.
Can we see that as an action item at the next meeting?
Well, if you're interested, this is my thought with this item, because it's not, I mean, 943, you have, you have an interested party, it's a little bit more of a frontburner because of ordinance violation, all those things. This one, if you're interested, we have, we have a running list, Peter and I do, of things that come up as we're administering the ordinance. You've seen a couple of those, those things we've just dealt with. There are certainly other items on that list. We can add this to the list, and the next time we're working on the ordinance, we can make it part of a set of amendments that might come forward.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Can you explain why in the Ag District, this would be a special use permit?
Well, I mean, for the same reason as the other districts. It's largely, because this was a new idea. This was not part of the 1991 zoning ordinance. And so, it's new to the community. The Ag District, even though it's large properties, it's still a single-family home when you build it. You know, there's some language in there, I think maybe about farm labor housing or something, but that's a whole different creature. So, it's still a single-family home, no matter how big the property might be. And so, the idea, when you have something new, is often to at least let the neighbors know it's happening. This is not something that, we bought the place, it could happen, now all of a sudden you say it can. So, the special use permit, because it requires a public hearing, at least notifies the neighbors of what's going on, so they can come in and be aware of it. As we talked about that application, we had a neighbor that came in, they didn't come to the hearing, but they came in ahead of time, looked at the application, asked some questions, apparently were satisfied with what they heard, and they left. So, it just simply, the special use permit, it does allow the neighbors to at least find out what's being proposed. Now, as I said, that's, it's new. Eventually, that may be expected, that accessory dwellings are simply part of a potentially single-family home. And, you know, so it may be less necessary in the future. Anyway, that's the primary reason, is that notification.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic? So, you've added it to your list, so we'll be seeing it again at some point. All right. So, we've reached the point of the meeting where we have extended public comments. So, individuals are invited to address the planning commission on any topic, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not. Once again, give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to five minutes on any issue. Extended public comments open at 9:02.
Hello, Allison again. Oops. I just wanted to acknowledge that I recognize there was the complaint that was filed against my property specifically. I don't know exactly which, again, I, it's not a hip of violation, but I don't know the confidentiality rules of all of it, as far as who said the complaint. But I did speak with some of my neighbors. I believe that it came from, not right there on the corner, because we are, my family, we are prior owners of the whole corner right there, where there's like the large building, the 989 property. I believe it's the two properties behind them, because our goats had broken out, and they had crossed across and went back behind there. To remedy the issue, we have reduced over 50 of our animals. We're down to just eight geese and one goat. Moving forward, if it were to be changed for our zoning, we would not even entertain the goats or geese. They're just too much of, they break out constantly with the fencing. It's great. But I have three little children, as well as the neighbors up the road. It's just a project of them. It's really a money pit, but it's a project. The kids do it. There's a lot of life lessons for them to learn out of it. So, moving forward, like, I do know that there were complaints that were filed about it. We've tried our hardest to get rid of the animals, selling them at auctions, you know, giving them away to other people that we know that have animals. So, we've reduced them to come in compliance with the violation and everything. But I know that there was discussion as far as, like, moving forward, how do you control that? Out of respect for all of our neighbors, like, I don't want them out, they don't want them out. We're trying to mediate that and everything. So, I know that the issue that got brought up is that there is a lawn care company back behind a couple of those, and they do reside there. Our animals were eating their deer bait pile back there. So, of course, they see a corn pile, they're going back there. So, we've put up another fencing to keep them from going back in that direction, as well as reducing the animals. But moving forward, like, if the zoning were changed, we would fix all of that, so that it wouldn't be an issue. As far as 989, that property right there, they plan to stay industrial. As far as the yellow building back behind 989, I don't know the address, but they face front on River Road. They plan to stay industrial, as well as the rest of them back behind there. It's property that buffers in between my property and the other one. I don't know what their current plans on it are. My property, it used to be 989 and 975, and then there's like a little made-up one in between. That was supposed to be expanded. The shop was supposed to expand into my property. My house was supposed to be demolished for future planning and everything. That obviously is not happening any longer, as we sold the 989 property. So, there is no plan for it to be combined. The one that is in between there, though, to my knowledge, in the past, it was used as, like, residential use. As far as I know, a family member had, like, gone in through and gutted the whole property. I don't know what it's being used for currently. I, we don't see anybody in there. But it is pretty heavily wooded right in between there, so as far as future use, I'm not sure. So, I don't see anybody there. But I just wanted to come up and see if anybody had questions in regard to my property specifically, because I know that was like the biggest issue. But I wanted everybody to be aware of that. I am mediating that and getting rid of the animals. I am mediating that and getting rid of the animals, and trying to come back up into compliance with everything. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I have no one online.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll thank the public for their comments, appreciate the clarification. Extended public comments closed at 9:06. We're at final board comments, so any comments from board members?
Just a quick, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to point out to Phil that both MTA, the Michigan Township Association, and MAP, the Michigan Association of Planning, offer workshops at various points throughout the year. I've been to a bunch of them over the years, they're really good. I think years ago, I went to one, and Rodney was the presenter, I'm pretty certain of that. But so they're planning professionals that present these things. And occasionally, they have them in Mount Pleasant, but more likely, they're, like, I just was looking in the magazine, Frankenmuth is a common one. I've been to ones in Big Rapids. The last one I was to was in Grayling in March. So if, when those things come up, I'm on the mailing list, but if Peter, if you find out about those, make sure he's aware, you know, I would encourage people taking advantage of those.
Thank you.
You have a comment?
I was going to apologize for my tardiness. Tonight was soccer night for my oldest. When I left, seven minutes remaining in the game, they were down three to four. The text came in, they rallied, won five to four.
Go Mount Pleasant.
Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, then we've completed our agenda, so we'll stand in adjournment until our October meeting.
Will you be here?